...the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming and I'd like to thank all the veterans in the room for their service in the past. And anyone certainly present here. Is this a disappointing another special call meeting?
We do. Um, it's recently come to the attention of the city that our surveillance video camera only retained video for about eight days. It's been investigated and from what we understand, the technology is just such that it can't be altered to contain any longer than that. It is very expensive and time-consuming to save all the data. I talked to VAG's office and the recommendation was to amend, we about, I guess almost 11 years ago, the city adopted, the passed a resolution, adopted the Georgia Archives, local government retention schedule with a few change amendments in their own. Local governments are committed to do that as long as they submit them, the changes to Georgia Archives. So, the resolution before you, there's two places in the retention schedule that deal with surveillance video. It's called surveillance, security and surveillance static video, there's different categories. And the retention for, for public safety, the public safety arena, if there was no known incident or accident, was actually a, um, was a hundred and eight, was, um, one of thirty days, one of a hundred and eighty days. I think, I think that one was thirty days, the other one was a hundred and eighty days. Both of those have been changed to eight days. In the, in the event that we, the city winds up upgrading its equipment to a point where we can retain them according to what's recommended by the state, you all could amend this again. This is a resolution, I'm an ordinance, so if you would change it in one meeting without two reads. Um, so, if you all adopt it, then, uh, once it's signed, take it and certify copy and give it to archives.
Okay, question?
Question?
Sure.
Um, so are we basing the resolution on, on the cost of technology? And because 11 years ago, to the memory, you know, technology is advancing at a rate where technology is affordable now. I know a terabyte DVR server is probably ten times cheaper than what it used to be. So, the, the retention, the retention schedule, you know, is, is not current in that it doesn't follow the price of technology. It doesn't price, follow the price of, um, the current costs. Do we have some costs associated with, with video retention or what's going on there?
As I said, I have a question first. It will be, how many days is the accepted number by state law?
One of the, the, if you look at the resolution, the, under public safety, there's no known incident or accident. Let me tell you which one's thirty and which one's a hundred and eighty, as both of them call. All right. Public safety, no known incidents or accidents, the retention according to the schedule published by the archives is thirty days. For other governmental building is a hundred and eighty days.
So then, we, again, with thirty?
For public safety.
Okay, should we, if we entertain getting equipment, should we get something capable of a hundred and eighty? I know from past experience, because that's where my expertise was. You can partition these things, have them set up for different schedules, you can set them up for different departments. So, the city's gonna obviously have to put out a request for pricing to get updated equipment, uh, which probably won't be in until the next budget, it'll be something to consider, I would imagine. So, being your advisement to council, should we entertain one that's capable of a hundred and eighty?
There's three people up there that know a whole lot more about technology than I do, um...
But by law, by, I'm walking to meet the standards of the law. If we're gonna make a purchase, I'm sure the citizens would want something that would meet the law.
From a legal standpoint, I'd like to recommend that you amend the, the schedule now. From the, from the standpoint of what the city wants, the thing I think is just simply a matter of the cost of the technology. Best practices is probably at least thirty days, um, and that's, I think that's the baseline. If there's an incre- if, if the incremental cost to go from thirty days to something more is sufficiently small, then it's probably something the city wouldn't entertain, um, in doing, but I, thirty days is, is, I would say, from there.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna answer your question, council. We're gonna have to entertain a price comparison and put that out for a request for pricing. Do you have a question? No?
Yeah, I do, I actually do. So, you're saying this is a two-part fold, they have to do, um, they change the resolution to eight days to be within the boundaries of the state? And second would be further down the road, go ahead and get the, uh, our, a request for proposal for the other. But tonight, really, it's about the eight days?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, um, any other question? Well, um, can I have a motion for accepting this resolution?
Motion to accept the regular retention schedule, the resolution, meaning the regular retention schedule, is yours.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a second. And all those in favor?
That concludes the business of special call meeting.
Okay. Do we need a motion to go out of the section of the resolution to adjourn from motion to return from special call?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the what? The second?
Second.
That, there are honorable seconds, all those in favor? All right. Next on the agenda, we have Edmund Nelson, uh, about the rollout bar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
No samples against my name.
Yeah, they're running around with a... In case, uh, any questions that came out board, anything like that, I know we spoke briefly, um, of, of, you know, about, see.
Attorney Mitchell, I think you were here when you proposed this bar, is there any suggestions or any thoughts?
Yeah, according to, the, as I understand what he wants to do, what's been explained to me, he wants to do it the way he's explaining it. There's gonna have to be an amendment, if he's gonna have to amend his plan, or he's gonna have to amend it, amendment to the alcohol ordinance. Under your current alcohol ordinance, any places that is serving alcohol basically has to be cordoned off from, so the people can't just leave with an open container. The ingress and egress has to, either one ingress, egress has to be through the main establishment or the establishment basically ha- it, it says, make sure no one leaves, that essentially means that you've got to have an employee stationed on the patio or the open area to make sure no one leaves with an open container.
Yes, I would agree with that.
In practice, there's not a problem doing, I think, what he wants to do, but as I understand, because you're not gonna build a structure that kind of blocks everybody in it, right?
Well, that would see, um, when we look at the regulations, because that fence is there, we'll have, uh, the latch in there and everything. So, it'll be a full regulation of that, making sure that everything is blocked in. And then also upstream in the pavilion area, that would also have less entrance and exit of the house.
Okay.
Will be in those guidelines.
So, that, that sounds like it's consistent with, do you, have you presented a drawing to the...
Uh, yes, yes, but, uh...
So, what you're gonna do is you're gonna fence it off, then you're gonna screen it in?
It's, it's already, we basically have the fence up now.
It's all the way around?
Yes.
And there's, oh, okay, all right, right, so, and then you're talking about screening it all in?
Right, yeah, the pavilion part.
It just looks like it's a personal door.
Now, would you need to draw something up for the council to make that amendment?
Does he already have an alcohol license?
No, I was just, I was waiting on him to get the, the, the...
Then, then he just needs to apply, what, when he applies his alcohol licenses, he'll submit an actual drawing of the, I think, for the, for certain premises. And so, when that's submitted, then y'all will just approve it, because it'll, it'll look like it'll be mine.
And on top of your artist's rendition, if you need consideration, I want to get that copy after.
But with all everything still, uh, once we get the go-ahead control, so, that's all of us looking for this, okay?
All right, when are you gonna, when are you gonna apply the, the license?
Uh, so, it's the vote come back to San Antonio floor.
Hold this one.
There will, there will be a formal vote, you said, or are you, were, the council seems okay with this from a, from a standpoint in, in the period where what you wanna do is consent to our ordinance, but now you just need to apply your license and submit the drawing?
Right.
Should be fine.
Okay.
Hey, um, any questions?
I have a quick, I have a quick question. Will this be, uh, will, will this be a permanent bar inside the structure? Or will this be a portable bar that will be moved from inside the structure to a storage, a storage area?
No, it's, it's, right, it's inside.
Drinks aren't gonna be served on the outside, they'll be served on the inside of the container.
Was we talked about alcohol in general, beer or wine or what, what alcohol are we talking about?
Yeah, it's just, it's just beer and wine. Beer and wine.
Yeah, okay, beer and wine.
We really wanna stick to, yeah, we really wanna stick to all moving and everything like that, we don't want any bottles broken out there.
I got you.
Um, we definitely a family restaurant, so we wanna make sure that we still appeal to all the family in the community as, as we do in the queue, so...
So, it's basically beer and wine?
Right. And the way it's gonna be designed, even if you're sitting in the dining area and looking at the bar, you won't see it, it'll be on the sidewalks and everything like that. So, wanna make sure that, uh, everybody can go over there and have a good time.
Any other questions? All right. I guess it's back on your board.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you.
I guess I'll bring up this next subject we had talked, um, in, during these meetings about, um, changing our work session, so that there was at least one between them. I don't know, um, councilman, I don't know, do you wanna add any more to that or any other explanation?
So, that is, uh, as we, we discussed previously, uh, I was impressed with, uh, two weeks' time, and I still would prefer two weeks' time, but it's in North Carolina, it's a, uh, it's a, uh, it's a case that people would be selling on. Uh, preferably, we had two weeks' time, my idea would be so that we, we have more time for, um, um, for model partners and also, um, a little more time so that we can, maybe if we had a question to research or the, um, reach out to the council, we have a little more time to do that. I also understand that, um...
I'd like to ask a question. Who on the council is not, does not have enough time with time just like you? Yeah, yeah. Look over, call for it, over.
Sorry, are you gonna answer?
What? I ask a question, so you're intending, I prefer longer than two days.
I need, I need more time, also.
We have to agree with what, to agree with what you have. I'm still working.
I'm kind of with time just like you. Oh, I need to get the information, before, before you leave.
I mean, myself, my schedule's pretty, pretty full, so, I would also like, but I don't have a vote in it, but I would like a week minimum. So, I'm gonna ask for a vote.
Can I ask anybody, um, that's not here tonight, how you feel about the situation? Go ahead.
Um, one of the things that you're running into is, from what I understand, is instead of going out for our fees for two weeks, which a lot of places do two weeks advertising, you're one week. So, if you have a meeting, you hit the advertisement, you hit it. Your next week meeting, if you do two weeks, you're gonna have your information. Otherwise, you're gonna be the flip side of it. You're gonna have to wait till the next voting meeting, which is gonna make you five weeks in between presenting something. Unless it's, of course, an emergency, but by your standard and your ordinance, of what I understand is, if you would allot time of the two weeks, you advertise one week, the other week you're gonna have your meeting you can vote on. Another thing is, is on allotment time, you're gonna be following the BOC meetings. So, if they have anything that's in your agenda or relating to the city, you will have time to communicate with the county to find out what's going on. You're gonna have a couple avenues coming up, like your SPOSS, um, other issues. And input is so important for the citizens, but we have the newspaper here. After he leaves, he gets in the paper, it's a following week. The citizens don't see it until the following week, unless some of them go on the internet and they catch statem concerned citizens. So, I've heard a lot of people say, well, I didn't know that was going on, but I read it in the paper. So, you're also presenting to the citizens the avenue of reading it in the paper, a lot of people still do read the paper. I worked at the county government for eighteen years, we did two weeks in between, and it gave the board and the employees to gather information, um, according to what the agenda had, what they had to post. But it also gave the citizens the avenue to call, whether it be the commissioner or the chairman. Because otherwise, what you're doing, today is Thursday, you got Friday, and then you have Monday. And then you're gonna have a voting, you are having a voting meeting. So, I feel if you can't change the format, then if you have things that are particularly needing a vote and the citizens can't get to you, put it to the following month on your voting meeting night. Then the citizens will actually have a whole month to get to you. Um, I know it's particularly important to get the whole information, and sometimes it's hard to get here on a Friday or a Monday, especially if people are working, because those are gonna be the only two days you can get to someone, and maybe Tuesday morning. Those would be my concerns, but I really feel your avenue of some of your decision-making would mainstream with the two-week versus the one-week, especially if you have to advertise.
I agree with her. Um, it takes time to do research sometimes, and we certainly don't have that period now. You know, it, it, depending on how deep you wanna dig, um, you do need more time.
Jessica, you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we need more time too. If I need to talk to any of them on an issue between, you know, now and, and Tuesday, I, I mean, I work full-time and I have a toddler. I have to email you or call you if, if I can get you, but I think it would be beneficial to the citizens to have more time too.
I have a question for, um, Ron. What, what is the deadline for the newspaper? The deadline for the newspaper is Monday.
The, the advertising deadline is noon.
Okay.
The news deadline, like, advertising deadline is noon. The news deadline is five-thirty Monday. But called meetings, regular meetings, that are after that, like yours, are in the newspaper that week. Now, that does not include advertising, then it has to be in public, because it's been processed and reduced.
So, we would have to, we would, in order to hit, make, meet the, change the schedule of the city's meetings to meet the needs of the newspaper for notification purposes, we would at least have to back up to a Thursday or a Friday, because Monday's out of the question. And back to Jessica, would, uh, what do you think about one week? Is a, is a week enough time?
I think at least a week.
Okay.
Sounds, sounds like maybe if you go the Thursday prior, right, from, say, last Thursday, you go last Thursday, you get your advertisements in by Monday. That gives you another full week of, um, of citizen input, okay? Plus, opportunities for y'all to, uh, look at, look deeply into whatever it is that you're doing. You go out two weeks, now you're, now you're pushing yourself, I think, to the point, I think that's, two weeks is too far because then you have a lag, okay? You don't need, you don't need a lag, you need opportunity. One week is opportunity to investigate, you have opportu- uh, you have advertising opportunity for the following voting meeting. I mean, that's just, to me, sometimes you can have too long between your work session and your actual voting meeting.
So, you're saying not Thursday and Tuesday, you're saying Thursday prior?
Prior, so, like, it would've been last Thursday, it would've been last Thursday. That'd give you time to accumulate whatever you need to get in the newspaper. It'll sit in the, it'll be in the newspaper for the entire week before the next voting, for the next voting opportunity.
Yeah, we could move the council and work session to Thursdays and meet the deadline. That would give us a week, uh, that would give us, the Mon- that would make the Monday deadline for the Thursday work session and the Monday deadline for the city council, or...
You're talking about moving both of them?
Both, yeah.
We have, Attorney Mitchell, I think you said we can't move without, um, a new, we have to amend our charter, but we have to move the voting session.
You have to make the ordinance, that's your charter, you have to make the ordinance for the, for the voting session. Your work session's not a matter of ordinance, it, it, since it functions, it's gotta be everyone.
Oh, so we could take our work session, move it, give it a week, and so that would give us not quite two, four weeks, and leave the voting session.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Uh-huh.
Move, move the, move the work session, okay? See how that pans out before you go ahead and make a decision to move the actual voting set, voting meeting. Because then, then if you're not satisfied with that, you're gonna end up having to provide another resolution in order to make the change back.
I tend to agree with, with that suggestion. Rather than go through all the motions of amending the ordinance, uh, that could still give you approximately ten days, which would open up some opportunity, and we could still be a little bit ahead of curve.
Michelle?
Mm-hmm.
I see your wheels turning.
Well, I think you're still gonna run into the issue of, um, not being able to do as much as you can, especially with certain, um, things coming up, where you wanna go out for bids and to present them. You're still gonna be at a five-week, if not, uh, two-month window. This is not new, a lot of governments do two weeks so that, um, they, they don't have, they, they post their agenda. A lot of, uh, cities and counties post their agendas a week prior, two weeks prior, because they're set anyways. To me, working in, um, both ways of the establishment, I have found that two weeks is not that long, really. By the time, if you wanna get your advertisement in with the paper, get your bids back, you have to have time to give whoever's bidding opportunity to come back. And then, um, you're gonna, you're gonna find that what you're gonna accomplish and what you're gonna get on your agendas is going to be more mainstream than a week from a week. That's just my personal dealings with government, um, because sometimes it isn't a matter of, well, I can everything done in a week. Y'all, there's a lot of times where it comes in where I have to call this person, and I have to contact this person, and I can contact this person. And it, it takes time. And then this way, you're presenting things, I think, more realistically, and you're gonna have more, um, applicable information. That's, that's just me, because I've worked in that both ways, and I, and I, I really found out it to be more mainstream, the, the two weeks, that's just me though.
So, the easiest thing to, to do, like, right now, would be to move the work session back to a Tuesday. And that would give us a week. If we don't like the week, we can change it again.
So, is it two weeks out, you go, you go back to a week again?
Two week or one?
That's, that's what we're talking about, that way.
Two week or one week, when you talk?
Oh, one week. One, we'll try one week, if it doesn't, if it doesn't super neat, it won't take us long to figure out if it's working or not working.
So, if, if you want the, if you want the, what's done at the work session to be in the newspaper on Monday, you think we can move your work session back to the Thursday prior? So that then, the, the Monday after that Thursday, there'd be a newspaper article about what happened at the work session. And basically, there's the rest of that week, um, well, actually, I guess the paper comes out on Thursday. So, people would have Thursday, Friday, over the weekend, and Monday, a contact call about anything, and you have your meeting on Tuesday.
Well, that would give us two, uh, ten days, approximately.
It'd be twelve days if you move it back to the next day. Based on what I'm hearing them saying, y'all saying, without having to change the ordinance, that seems to be the easiest fix to begin with, and if that doesn't work, then think of some more.
Okay.
Uh, definitely think it would give opportunity for citizens' input. I think it would give an opportunity for the working people on the council to take that input, um, and also do the research. So, I kinda like that idea. And it's not quite two weeks, but I think it's definitely better, uh, gives opportunity to get things in the paper. Those, I, I know there's a large number of people in this town that still read the paper, including my wife. Can we get a motion for moving it to the prior Thursday?
You'll do that as a... What, what we'll need to do, if y'all choose to do that, is probably have a schedule of what those Thursdays are.
Okay.
And, and not an ordinance, but a resolution, saying we're gonna have our work sessions or workshop, whatever you wanna call them, on these dates of the year.
Okay, I can get that draft set up for everyone and put it in our metlogs. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, we have Gary and Danny to discuss some things with city buildings and property. Do we wanna move that to executive session?
Based on what I understand, you all, if that would be the question, yes, I think we can.
So, we'll, we'll shelve that until the, towards... So we'll, we'll shell that until the, uh, towards the end. One of the things I wanted to talk about is, I've been working with Jordan and some, uh, different organizations, uh, our EMI, engineering group, and trying to get some suggestions of what we can do to improve our water and, um, look at some future things. So I just wanna let everyone know that we are, I am looking into these things, and what I find, I will be presenting to the council for their, uh, in, input on, and, uh, when the time comes. Uh, right now, there's no pricing involved, it's just some things that have worked for other municipalities with similar problems to what state has, and that it has improved the water quality, uh, very favorably. Uh, it has gotten rid of, of odors, it's got rid of a lot of taste issues, uh, which seems to be the things that citizens have brought to, uh, to our attention, so, um, that's really all I have to say about it at this point. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are pursuing that avenue. You have a question?
Yeah, well, it, it has to do with water, it's not necessarily drinking water, but, um, on Sunset Drive, okay? There, obviously, you know, there's a new project that they're, uh, building, they're building new houses, they're, uh, preparing to build new houses, they've restructured their sewer and everything like that. The city's got a problem, okay? Right now, what, my fa- uh, my uncle, or my wife's uncle owned the land. Originally, he had designed it for three ponds, okay? Right now, there is, uh, one pond, one broken pond, which is used, is basically being used for, uh, water retention or runoff, okay? The problem is, there's beavers, beavers have built.